That concludes public comments. Council comments?
May I?
Yes.
Over my big mouth. I ran on a platform of working together with people. But I live in the United States of America, and I believe we have the right to disagree, but it's how we disagree. I think when we have a disagreement, if I lose an argument, I move on, and I don't get angry with the people that disagree with me, because one day we'll come to a problem and be on the same page. I ran for affordable housing. When you have people putting up sheds to live in, I just got a call yesterday in the city limits, so I called the code enforcement officer. And there's someone living in sheds, this is within the city. We have that problem in the county. I also ran on blight in neighborhoods, and that included abandoned cars. And when I was down to the fire department, what was it, Parsonsburg? We heard about the trash, and that's blight, trash on the highways, all that stuff. So I think we need to address that. And it's being addressed because we just passed legislation about the nuisance and repeat offenders. I'm happy about that, and hoping that will solve some of the problems. Crime prevention programs. We have a lot of crime in our county, and we need to try to prevent crime. And how we prevent crime, because I did administer after-school program at my church for a couple of years. You start working with the young people, the children in elementary school. And I mentioned it with, to met Mike Lewis, our sheriff, and his chief deputy about like bringing a DARA program back, which was a national program. But they have the deputies already in the school system, so they do have programs and have met, meet with the students with the trust factor, where kids can tell the sheriff that's on duty, things that may happen to prevent certain things in the schools, because that's, the schools now are dangerous. Teachers, I don't know how they do it. I really don't. Another platform I want to do, open the playgrounds in the summer for kids who cannot afford to go to camps and things. Even Salvation Army has been expensive. And also upgrade playgrounds, because we do have a playground in the county on Chippewa Boulevard that just looks like a, I call it a ghost playground. The equipment needs to be upgraded. They need to cut some of the trees down to open it up for maybe a soccer field. I know they have the basketball court. They need maybe paint that like they did in the city. Also, I think one of the, to me, one of the employees that they need to hire, which I spoke to the executive, because I did take her on tour of the district before she was sworn in, is a grants writer for programs. And I would support that if the person has to be qualified. And that's basically what I feel. If I personally feel that people are not qualified for the position and be able almost to move right in and do the work, I will not support it. It's nothing about, it's nothing personal with me. It's what I feel is right. Our county needs qualified people to move right in to a position and maybe be trained on the way we do things, but they have to have the qualifications. And a perfect example is the person that is the director now of our health department, which we approved. He's qualified. He's worked in the health department. He ran a health department. He was just overwhelmingly qualified. So when we have people, the gentleman that was the, had the police background, he's overwhelmingly qualified to be a police officer. I would support him 100% if he was applying for a job for the sheriff's department. But administratively, he did not have the qualifications. The other young lady, I don't know her personally. I don't have anything against her. I feel that she was not qualified. And to me, that's our right. I don't have anything against Julie. She's never disrespected me, except the other night when she interrupted me, but I don't have anything against her. I have a thick skin. I have a very thick skin. I don't take things to heart. Another thing that I wanted to say is that we do have to get along. We do have to be, work as a team. But when the lady was up here saying it's no way to highway, personally, people have called me and said, what's wrong? Is it her way or the highway? You know, they said that, made that comment, but it made it about the executive. And I said, I don't know. I said, I know, I don't agree, I do not agree with her on this particular issue. There may come another issue, I'll agree with her. But this particular issue, I do not agree with her about the two people. And I think it's our right. James, my buddy over there, he has every right to do his thing, because he's in the learning process. But I'm not mad with James, because he don't agree, disagree with me, because he's a young boy. And I'm proud of him taking, being involved in the political process, because we need young people. We need to pass the baton. I agree wholeheartedly. He has the right to disagree with me or any other council member, because that's the way the democratic process is. As far as the budget is concerned, I did read the budget. I did ask questions. However, I was, did not participate in the, trying to find raises for the employees. And I'm quite sure people that's in the workforce environment would like to get a raise. And I thought, I thought they did a good job in finding money. Because one thing I was kind of concerned about was taking the money from the volunteer fire department. But they did not have a problem with that, because the city didn't need the money. I forgot what it was called. But they didn't need the money at that time, because they hadn't got the program together. So we did increase the maintenance of effort. However, they retook $500,000 from that, and I understood why. Next year, we may not have to do that, hopefully. But one of my jobs, which I haven't done yet, but I promise, I want to meet with the superintendent, and I want to itemize, I'm going to ask, itemize what they do with the maintenance of effort money that we do give them, how it's being used on the student. I want to know, what does it go for? Does it go for books? Does it go for computers? Does it go for the lunch? I need to have an understanding of how the maintenance of effort is being used. But I do support the education, because today, in today's society, our schoolteachers and administrators are really very stressed. Bus drivers, I heard on news, they're trying to find bus drivers in one town, they can't even find them. They're up against a lot of stress. I don't know how to do it. I really do. And I do support education. If they think, don't think, they do. I've had eight children in the school system, six of my own and two I inherited. So I just, I respect the people up there. I didn't get mad with the lady. I rode the elevator with her. I don't even know who she is. But she had the right to say what she said, and so the gentleman before her. So I like to get along with people, because I'm a friendly person. Anybody know me, I'm a friendly person. And I say what I think, and nobody tells me what to do. And if this is the good old boys system, I'm proud being with these young, these men. They help me, they respect me, and like I said before, I don't care what party they're from. James is good, he helps me, parks my car and puts my walker in the car. So I get help from everybody, and I get advice from people, because I don't know everything. I don't want to know everything in this brain. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shields. Any other council comments? Joe, go ahead, James. Go ahead, Shane.
I have a comment. So it was mentioned tonight, or today, that the county executive and I ran our campaigns together on the campaign trail. That's true. Usually where she was, I was, James was, vice versa. We went to a lot of things together, and we did. Although that, we did that, people need to keep in mind, if there's something that I disagree with her on, now that we're elected, I've got to make it known. I have to vote with the way I believe that my constituents want me to vote, how I think I should vote, and move forward. So sometimes we're going to disagree. I have not disagreed with everything that she has wanted. Sometimes people want to say that, that's not true. We voted many things in her favor, but there's been some things that we just can't agree upon. One, the thing now going for the court battle. We're going to go to court, we're going to find out who's right. It's a disagreement. We got to work through it. I mean, this isn't going to be easy. This is, this is what we have to do. But we're not always going to agree.
Joe, go.
Okay. Shani, thank you for your comments. When you say you say what you're thinking, if I said what I was thinking right now, I would probably not be welcome in this room. But anyway, you know, the people that asked for a resignation up there, they think they're the first ones that did it. They're not. This has been going on for years. People get mad, they come up, next thing you know, they come along and want your money. Right, John?
Yes.
Remember the night we sat at the table, and that young lady wanted money from us?
Yeah.
And we gave her money. I guess we didn't give her enough. We should have given her more money. Maybe she wouldn't have been here today. But anyway, John and I both made a donation to her that night for her fire department. And that's disappointing that, you know, they'll put their hand out and want money, but they got a knife in the other one and come after you. And that's very disappointing when people do that. You know, we can talk forever about what we've done, what we're going to do and all that. There's been dozens of bills. We had quite a few today that was put forward from the county executive that we approved. We haven't approved two people that she wanted. And that's what this is all about, just two people that she wanted that we have not approved. The dozens that we, multiple, I guess I couldn't say dozens, multiple people we have approved, you know. We didn't have either person stand at that podium and say, thank you for approving this employee or that employee. And we don't expect that. We didn't, we don't expect them to do that. We don't ask for thank yous for what we do up here. We do our job. As far as working together, councils work together on many items up here. We disagreed on some. You don't always get your way. My gosh, over the years, you know, I've been the one lone vote. I've been part of three votes. I've lost a lot of votes that I wish to go on the other way. But you don't get up and spew hatred to people because they do it. So, John, next time, we'll just give them more money. Maybe they won't show up. Hey, what do you think about that?
Thank you. Josh?
I'll just be brief and say, you know, that I learned years ago, there's a, there's a difference between being nice and being kind. I think there's a, you know, if you want to, folks want to get a lot of things done, you know, you'd be kind and you'd be thoughtful. And I think the folks that are here at this table are kind and thoughtful. You can't, we can't change what's happening on the federal government level. We can't change what the, you know, national media of different partisan wavelengths, what they think and what they say. But what we can do is try to put good, thoughtful, kind policy together. And so here at the local level, I think we're doing that, and we're going to continue to do that. So I'm proud to serve these folks.
Any comments? Jeff?
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for referring to us as a group of young men. I personally appreciate that. Now, I just want to thank everybody for calling, emailing, texting, Facebook messaging, the council office, and us individually, when something comes up. That's the way to get the real facts. We're very transparent. Things that are held behind closed doors are behind closed doors for a reason. It's usually a personnel issue, like a job interview. You wouldn't want your dirty laundry hanging out there any more than anybody else. So that's the reason it's done that way. To Josh's point, there's a lot of kind people up here. I see the work all these people do. And, you know, personally, I've spent in the business world, the nonprofit world, and now the political world. And the political world is the least kind out of all of them, I can tell you. But I will say, don't mistake my kindness for weakness. I'll have your back till the very end, until you stick a knife in it. I'm looking forward to attending the Summer Mako. I think a group of us are going. There's a lot of great information out there. I'm looking forward to what they have to say about the cannabis legislation and the Family Medical Leave Act, because that is going to affect not only the county, but every business in this area, in the state. So wanting to hear a lot about that. It's a great opportunity to talk to other individuals in other counties that are having similar issues as us. There's a lot of sharing of information, so it's a, it's a great time. And I'll close by saying, I want to say something about the importance of communication. Communication builds trust. Communication will gain respect. And we need to improve our communication all around. The door swings both ways. We're all talking about working together. I think everybody up here wants to work together, but that door swings both ways. So that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, I might as well say something.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, I am educating myself. I've read the Constitution. I've taken classes in Maryland and state and federal constitution. I've read our charter several times. I've read our Opens Meeting Act several times. I do feel like I am educating myself, yes. I do believe that, you know, the people that were not approved were qualified, even though we did it in a closed session. The argument here is, you know, what's, what's a submission? You know, the submission is interesting, because the county executive can request to submit something, closed, open, doesn't matter. But who controls that is, is the council, is if it goes into legislative session or not. So then I take my critical thinking hat on, and I say, okay, well, what does the Constitution say? Says there's a separation of powers. And if the county executive cannot control when something goes into a legislative session, then is it, is that charter right? You know, what did the charter say before we modified it? That's all I'm going to say about all of this, because we need to move on as a county. We need to get this person, we need to get this executive a lawyer. That way we can go ahead and move on, because I don't even think we need to do a lawyer. I think we should just settle this out of court, have a retired judge look at it, because we're going to spend a lot of money going this route. I don't agree with that. I don't want to be a part of it. I, I just want to separate myself from this, because it's given me a lot of anxiety. But if these people can't do the job, the executive will remove them. If they're, because they did meet the qualifications, but if they're not doing the job the way they need to be doing them, then the executive should remove them and get someone else. I think she should have that ability to be able to do that, especially if they're qualified. But that's, that's, that's all I'm going to say about this, so we can move on, like I said. But I would like to say that I had a few people message me, I've been getting messages all the time, but I've had a few people message me about the Horizons bill. I told them that I would mention it. I know Joe would probably support that, but we should bring it up. There's some people that are not happy with how it's impacting the county and the community as a whole. And I just maybe think that that would be something that this council can move on and move forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Any other comments? Under presidential comments, I'd like to say I appreciate everybody's comments here. Yes, everybody is entitled to their First Amendment right. They're entitled to their own opinion as well. I agree with all that, but certainly I feel that no matter what the case might be, you can agree to disagree respectfully. I think that's required. That's why, you know, this council here, among each and every council member here, I cannot tell you how many times over the years that we have disagreed. But that's why decorum is so important in this council chambers, because we're going to continue to work, and we're going to continue to work as a united body regardless. So again, I just don't think it's productive, you know, to, to allow vitriol to, to be part of that process. I think it needs to be very respectful at all times, no matter what anyone's opinion might be. Mrs. Cook, your comments, I really appreciate it. Very respectful, and your point was well taken. So again, I'm...
She's still here.
And again, I'm privileged to work with each and every one of these individuals. I really certainly have to say, to try to even suggest that any, any member, these people were elected officials. You have to understand what it takes to become an elected official, whether you're an executive or whether you're a council member. You have to be out there, and you have to be up front. These are not puppets. You don't, the character and the backbone is not part of this. Having no character or having no backbone is no part of this job. You have to be very thick-skinned, as Jeff had suggested here. So to try to suggest that, that there's a puppet up here or anything to that, that degree, couldn't be any further from the truth. I'm not really a fan of such a political theater. They're all independent thinkers. Joe, comment that you and I are good old boys. However that might be, they have no idea, do they, Joe, as to far as how many times you and I have fought against each other and had huge battles against each other over the last few years. But that's part of this process, and still have a lot of respect for you, Joe. And again, I have a lot of respect for this council. So that being said, I encourage every council member to move forward and continue, just as we have been, all seven of us. So I have to make a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305B, want to discuss the appointment of independent legal counsel to protect the privacy of the individual. It's a motion. Second? Oh, is it fair? Hail. First item on the open work session is proposed amendments to the purchasing manual. Good morning again. Still morning.
We're all good.
You could just state your name and position for the public?
Yes.
And then you have...
Amy Carnotl, Wycomico County Purchasing Agent, requesting a legislative bill to be considered for amending the purchasing manual and adding software or the software maintenance and support as part of an exception to the competitive bid process. And I have given examples, I believe, where we would like to insert the specific wording. I believe it's in three different places.
Sorry.
We have 55 current softwares within the county. And currently, excuse me, currently the departments have to request sole source documentation each fiscal year for approval. If it is less than the $25,000 mark, it just needs my approval. If it increases to the 25 or larger dollar amount, we have to bring it up to council for approval. So 55 every fiscal year could be time-consuming, and I believe that if this bill passes and is considered, we can free up that administrative time to be more productive.
Okay. Any questions? I think you had a very good letter, very good points that you were making, part of what it is, part of what you stated, just so the public understands it. To quote what you've said, it says here that it's in the county's best interest to avoid the administrative time spent by the requesting department, by the purchasing department, by the county executive, by the county council, for these type of, for this, for this type of reoccurring process. And we understand that, and we recognize that. And I think the fact that you were pointing out specifically computer software is probably a major issue, certainly think it's worth, worth taking into consideration. Josh?
See, I don't have a whole lot of concerns or heartburn, per se, but I'm going to guess you're saying, so we have 50, how many do you say?
55.
55 different, and that's computer software platforms across the county that we use?
Yes.
And then, you know, usually try to get an understanding, I guess, are there, are there any pitfalls if we do, let's say we move in this direction, or is there any unintended consequences or anything that you think would be, you know, something that could be an issue within this or, you know, and also note, you know, generally, we have different thresholds or different guides within, from what I remember, what I understand from our purchasing, or there, you know, I guess you're saying this within the certain, within the $25,000 and under?
Yes, those are the thresholds that would determine whether it's just my approval or the council's approval. Pitfalls, no, because this is existing software. So you guys have either already approved the large dollar amounts, and reoccurring these sole sources, again, is just redundancy. Anything new, this does not tie our hands, so if I need to bring to you software, or IT needs to bring to you software for consideration for the future, this is just for existing software.
And software, more so than any other, I guess, than in any other category, when you're dealing with software maintenance and upgrades, et cetera, and support, that's about as proprietary as you can get.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yes, especially when it comes to specific softwares. UNIS, it's our financial and HR. When it comes to the corrections and sheriff's department, they have software that has vital information that needs to be secure. So if we've already tied ourselves to these softwares, you know, unless something drastic happens and we need to go for a new software, we are pretty much tied to these existing softwares. So bringing them each year doesn't make sense to me.
Yes, Josh?
Just one last question, just for clarity too, also, you know, I don't, I don't know all of the systems. I know in the, you know, in the nonprofit world, the world that I've existed, we usually, often we'd go forward with a particular company, and then they would have those platforms under their jurisdiction, say the use of Microsoft 365, or, you know, examples, what you named the systems. Would this competitive, I guess, would this, would this be just for the computer software itself, or for the companies that are administering those? Or do we not generally work with third parties that are administering large platforms?
So it's the actual software itself, and then any reoccurring agreements in order to do the maintenance and support thereafter.
Everybody for motion agreement? Ms. Rowley, where would this go?
So we would bring it back for introduction at the next meeting.
All right. All right. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of a property tax credit for volunteer fire departments. We have with us the distinguished Fire Chief C.K. Twilley.
Good morning, councilman.
Welcome.
I'm the president of Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association, is why I'm here. I'm not just, I'm the, I am the chief of the Willer Fire Department. I was asked today by, to appear here today by Shane Baker. I believe you guys have copies of how we proposed to do that. The Chiefs Association voted to do that, to go with this way, to recommend you qualify for that, for the, with the 50 points. Addressing Mr. Atkins, there is already a program in the county for disabled volunteer firemen to get your property taxes exempt. It was approved, I believe, four months ago, three, you guys were all, I mean, you, the new, the new council that took it over, it's already been approved. You need, if you look on the county, and I hate to do it, but if you look at the county website, there, I suppose there's a drop-down or a place that you can click on, you put your information in, and you will qualify for that, sir. I'm sorry, you didn't know that. That's kind of before, you know what I mean? But that's what we go with, this is the standard we go with with any fire department. I don't feel anybody should get a property tax credit if you're not doing anything for the fire departments. The Chiefs Association, they voted to go it this way. Average is about 25 homes per company that we'd be forgiving the property taxes for. And I have looked, I haven't had a chance to look through it all through the bill. I have looked through it. There is room for improvement on anything and everything. I will take this back to the Chiefs Association, let them look at this, and see if there's any ideas or ways they want to differ, a difference...
that, you know, I'm passionate about, other council members up here are passionate about getting help to the fire companies, it'll help with retention and recruitment. I think it's something that we should work on now, get it passed, even though it's not going to go into effect until this coming year, I'd like it to be done and wrapped up. I don't know if we need to call Ms. Olland up to the table and include her.
May I?
You may.
And we do recognize that a fiscal note is very important before this moves forward, just so you're... And Mr. Twilley recognizes?
Oh, yes, yes, I understand that.
Yeah.
So, I have read through this. There's a couple suggestions that I have associated with this. One of them, actually, I'll start from the front and work back. It talks about active service. Should this define what active service is? Because I'm not seeing a definition in here. I know you referenced the 50 points, but there's no reference to what active is, and it leaves it up to the volunteer firefighters' chiefs to say that they met active service. As an accountant and an ex-auditor, that's a little ambiguous.
Open-ended.
Yeah.
Open-ended.
Yeah, so it needs to have some very specific definitions of what active means, what documentation is going to be provided for active.
And actually, CK and I had spoke about that, and we knew this was just a work session.
Right.
It would need to be tightened up.
So, that is my first suggestion. That kind of relates to Section C and eligibility. So, in Section 5, it talks about application and annual verification. I would say that date needs to be date-specific, because in the next section, it talks about that you would, that the Volunteer Firefighters Association would provide this information to finance on June 1st. My recommendation as a finance director who has to provide to council by the 3rd Tuesday in April, a budget with the administration, that this would need to be presented to us by April 1st, so we have an idea of how many people this is affecting, what impact this does have on the budget. In most years, when we have our 2% cap, it's not going to cause a whole lot of issue, but there could be a year where we don't have a 2% cap, that you have to take this into consideration in what you're doing. And so, having this before the budget is submitted is an important aspect for finance. And then in Section 3, it just, again, these are some tightening up things. Section 3 of Number 5, it says, "Initial application and supplica application will be attached. Documentation from the county finance or state assessment showing the amount of the assessment." We should tighten up exactly what we're looking for. You know, are we looking for a printout from, you know, Maryland Real Property Search? You know, what specific document are we looking for to prove that these people own their home and it is on the tax rolls that way? So, again, I'm asking for, you know, is this, what specific document do we want to prove that piece of it, that they are the homeowner?
Are you suggesting that, such as the Department of Assessment and Taxation, assess values, denoting who the owner is, whether it's a residence or not? Or are you saying that doesn't suffice?
I'm suggesting that if we want to use Maryland Real Property Search, we make very specific what the printout is, is that we're looking for. We attach an example, we attach, just so that there's no, again, open-ended idea that, hey, me submitting this piece of paper saying I own this home meets the qualification. I, as an ex-auditor, want external information that is not something that's presented by the homeowner.
Right.
I want information from the state of Maryland, and we have a very easy source for that, but I think that source needs to be very spelled out and not leave it open-ended on that. So, those are kind of my three big things, is that we really need to define what active is in this. Highly recommend that this would be April 1st, so that...
Make you sleep easier.
Well, and that then, with Number 5, then, the date that the fire chiefs need their information needs to be kind of a specific date from them, so that they can get it to us by April 1st, instead of the date you guys pick. Again, open-ended dates leave for people going, well, you know, you didn't have to submit it till April 1st, here's March 31st. I've given you everything you need.
I understand that.
So, you know, tightening down the requirements is important.
Most every fire department, I cannot speak for them all, I can speak for Willards. If you don't get your 50 points a year, you are not active. That's just how, and you know, and I was asked by two or three councilmen, what if they don't get their points? You don't get your years of service, you're not active that year. That means you can't hold a position in our fire department. You can't, you actually can't even vote until you get your points.
And that's why I'm suggesting that this be, define what active is, so that there is no question marks.
CK, does the, does the Fire Department Association as a group follow the same standards as you're suggesting with words? I'm assuming they would, right?
Yes, yes. We ought, this, to be able to get, this is for the income tax credit for the state that gives us. To be able to get that credit, you have to be active, and everybody in the county goes by this.
And that's kind of why I'm, we might want to even just reference that, because they have to submit that to the state to get the income tax credit. Maybe that's the form we want.
I feel that you ought to have to feel, this is what we get, Pam, when we qualify. That's what we get, saying that we qualified for our points of the year. I feel we ought to have to qualify, send that in to you guys to show that we were active.
And that's why I, you need to reference this, kind of the specific document, but I think that's an important document to have.
The Chiefs Association, that's how we all kind of leaned, well, we actually kind of voted on it, to do that, to use this paper for you guys, to save from us having to fill out a whole nother paper for the county. This has already been done. We can print, instead of two copies, we print three, send one to you guys, and whatever else you guys want for the property tax thing, I can agree with that as well.
Good. Ms. Hurley has taken notes on this, to help us upgrade this.
And far as, something else, to talk about what he brought up, there is some other things, like the LOSA program, which I believe you took the money from. I understand that because that program had not been even off the ground. I agree with that. And I believe I talked to Councilman Holloway, sitting over here. There are some other things that we need to do, but let's get this done behind us, so it opens the pipes up to do some other stuff for the county, for the fire departments, as maybe the LOSA program, get that started back, you know, down the road, you know, get this behind us, get one thing at a time done. I feel this is a very good way to start for the volunteers. The fire chiefs had all talked about this in their meetings. This was kind of the way we wanted to go for, to start with, to show that you guys were trying to do something for everybody. I know it. I know this is not going to hit everybody. I understand that, but we've got to start somewhere. If we don't start anything, we're never going to get anything accomplished.
So, Mrs. Hurley, will we take this information now and present it back to Mr. Mitchell?
Right, so it has to be reviewed by legal counsel. So, I'll present this information, and then we'll come back, either for another work session, or come back for introduction.
It probably should go... And not ignoring finance either.
Yes.
And not ignoring finance.
Thank you. Since ultimately, we will be the ones who have to get this on the tax bills, I would like to, you know, make sure we can get on the tax bills appropriately.
I guess my question is more of, you're talking about tax bills. How will you work that? Will you deduct that from their taxes as you... I guess I'm looking in the weeds here. What would be easier for the tax office? You send out the bill on their taxes, and they come in and they say, okay, here's my paper, I've got my time, and we deduct it that way? Or do you go into the system and deduct it from what the fire departments give you?
So, the advantage to having this in April 1st gives us the ability to actually put it on individual tax bills when it goes out. So, we would have the ability to, by person, add it as a line to their tax bill and show it as a deduction. There was one other actual comment made by my finance staff, is that, and I could have easily missed this. The question becomes is, if their taxes don't equal the full amount of the credit, I'm assuming council is not looking for us to cut them a check for the difference. We need to make that clear in here as well.
No, it's not.
I'm not sure it's clear in here right now, that it's up to the maximum of your tax bill, up to the dollar amount that you have on this thing.
Okay, that needs, that's into legalese, that'll have to be...
But it is a point, because if we don't spell it out, somebody could walk in the door and say, well, my tax bill's $1,300, and you're telling me I can get a $1,500 credit, I want my 200 bucks.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
We're not looking for that.
Okay.
Nobody ever brought that, we're not looking to get any money.
Hey, easy, CK, you might get back to the fire department now, bro.
No, this is just, we're asking for it a little bit here, is all.
So, that's kind of another one of those tightening up things, just to make sure that the language is what is intended.
Josh?
I always bring this up. So, years ago, we heard that we don't have a good understanding of how many folks are actually own their homes, and have we gotten any clarity into that? I say all that, obviously, because, you know, luckily, I bought my home in 2016, but I got a ton of friends who are, you know, the millennials and now Gen Z are trying to buy homes, and, you know, there's nothing to be bought. So, I'm assuming that there's a gap that's going to be there, and that's probably not just for anyone under 40. So, ideally, in an ideal world, and an ideal policy, and recognizing that we don't have an ideal situation, and we want to get something done quickly, I fully support that. But I still want to get to the point of, you know, for the folks that I grew up with, who hung out in the firehouse, who want to be a part of this, who maybe don't own their own homes, how are we supporting them? Is there something that we could do as a, you know, continuing service stipend or something like that, where, you know, maybe it's even half the amount, but it could be an annual stipend they could apply to if they've done their service and they're active and they've met this? I'm just trying, not that we want to, you know, build something that's too fiscally irresponsible, however, it'd be nice to have something that folks really felt like this was, you know, broad enough that anyone could benefit.
I agree with that, and that's why I say, I know, that's why I said, I know this is not going to hit everybody. That's why I said about the LOSA program that had been proposed before, I think when we get this done, then we need to look, like you just said about the people that don't, maybe don't own their homes, maybe some of this will propose to buy a home in the county. I know this is not going to hit everybody. I understand that, and we all, I think we all do.
But it's a start.
But it's a start, and that's, it's just a start. It's a building block for, I think, what the county could do for the volunteer fire service.
Yeah, and I'll bring up, too, that, not, I'm not trying to make this more complicated, I just thought, but the city of Salisbury did put together a program years ago. They wanted their employees to buy homes in the city of Salisbury, so they did a tax credit, and that's been, I think, a pretty successful program.
Yep.
If there's something along those lines where, you know, the folks could buy their home in the county, you know, I'm just trying to think more creatively. I wholeheartedly agree with the intent, and without trying to balloon an already narrow fiscal landscape, but anything more we can do?
So, again, if we take one step, at least we've taken one step, trying to potentially add on at this step, the question becomes, does it get bogged down? And that is just a comment. It's not an opinion, one way or the other. It's, the question becomes is, do we want to take one step and then go on to whatever the next step may be? LOSA, something about buying in town, but do we want to expand that to our own employee, or in the county? Do we want to expand that to our own employees? Do we want to just have it be the fire? You know, we said it was successful for the city of Salisbury to have their own employees. Do we, so, you start adding on those layers, and you try to add it on to this?
Yeah, no, I don't want to add any, for clarity, I don't want to add any poison pill to this.
Okay.
But I do want to make sure that it stays on our radar. We said, like, three or four years ago, we were really committed to try to address the comprehensive folks that are retired, or others who had issues, you know, so I just want to make sure that we're doing that, and that stays on our radar, which I'm sure we are, but, and that you all, you know, I'm not in the conversation, and I trust Councilman Baker, you know, he is. So, if there's anything that you all can do to continue to look at that, I know folks that are vulnerable, that are in the spot, that would benefit, you know, but they don't own a home, and anything we can do to support that, I'd greatly do so.
Mr. Councilman Holloway said something prior to the meeting started about, maybe like tuition at Warwick. I believe that's something we, I mean, that's down the road, you know, I mean, that's something we could start as well. You know, if you want to volunteer your time in the county, you know, sign this little contract saying, you're going to give us two years, you know, volunteer your time the best you can, we'll pay for half your tuition for your EMT or your paramedic, because everybody knows we need more paramedics, because it is getting tight out there. But like I said, I think, I'm like, Pam, to make this, let's just get this passed, and then we can all work together, like we've always done before, and getting something accomplished here.
Would I be speaking out of turn if I said the position of most firefighters are at the point, they want to see something done?
Yes.
They're ready to see something done.
Yeah.
Let's get it done, and then we can talk in the future about making it bigger, better, whatever.
Well, just like this, I believe the comment was made...
Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Atkins. There's a lot, there's not a lot done in the county for the fire service right now. You know, they did pass the Disability Act, you know, but we're trying to work on that. But yeah, it's time to say, hey, we're doing something for you guys. I mean, because there's a lot of time. I mean, you take the day. I mean, I've been here since 10 o'clock, and I'm doing this because I love my county, and I'm a volunteer firefighter, and I love it. I wouldn't do anything else. You know, I'm volunteering my time, I'm not getting paid for this. I want this passed for everybody in the county. This is for every fire department in the county. Shane Baker has done a very good job on this. Get this passed, and I think we can, a very building block, a very good building block for what we can do.
So, Pam? Hate to complicate things for you, but I've got some questions. What if this volunteer fire, volunteer member of the fire department doesn't live in Waukesha County? Now, we've got Allen that's on the border, we've got Delmar that's on the border, or I guess they're actually in Delaware, and we've got, well, I guess Willards is close to the border. Sharp Towns is close to the Delaware line. So, do we need to put something in here that have to live in Waukesha County, or do we put something in here? How would we?
It would have to be a Waukesha County-owned residence, because, I mean, those are the only ones we can offer a credit for.
I understand, well, we could offer a credit in a different sort of fashion if we wanted to, but...
Well, but, so, and that is where, that is where the expansion of the program needs to be looked at, at that LOSA concept, as to whether or not non-homeowners within, non-Waukesha County homeowners, via, they either live in Waukesha County and don't own a home, they don't, they haven't moved out a home for their parents, you know, their parents, because they're still young, or they're living in an apartment, or they do live on the border and they live in another county.
So, do we know of anything like that, CK?
No, and I do have a couple people that live in Sussex County that still are volunteers. As a matter of fact, my president is one.
That could be an issue with LOSA, but I don't see that as a property tax.
Well, and that's, with the LOSA, we could offer it to those who meet the definition of active for the county-based fire service. With this, we cannot.
Can I just...
And so, again...
Another thing that we're going to have to look at, see...
Correct, and that's, and that is the disadvantage to having it just be homeowners, because the only people we can impact are Waukesha County homeowners. Again, as CK stated, it's a step. It's not, it is not a complete picture, it is not a finish line, it is a step.
And correct me if I'm wrong, CK, but the fire service kind of brought this to us, like, this is what we'd like to see. So, we have to keep that in mind, although we're not going to make every firefighter happy. The fire service kind of put this forward and said, this is what we'd like to see from the county.
Yeah, we've been dragging this along for three and a half, four, yeah, at least four years, because I talked to the president of the association before I was, and he said it had been two years, at least three, maybe three. With him, we slept since, you know, it's, there's been a lot under the bridge.
I think if we get this done as it sits, we can always work on it.
Oh, this is definitely a building, a building block for the volunteer fire service in the county.
And I think what will probably help us to go a long way in this, Mr. Twilley, is the fact that, I mean, you've presented us numbers that I've never heard before, that we've been asking for forever. It's an average, I get it, but at least it's a number, and you're stating that there's about 25 homes per station, right?
Yep.
I'm trying to understand the fiscal note.
So, here's my request, is they had to have already submitted last year's forms.
Yes, to the state.
To the state. May I have last year's forms for all the people that you would say are active, that we could then get a fiscal note from?
So, you need the copy of everybody that owns their home that are active, that lives in Waukesha County?
Yes.
I will have that. I'll meet with the Chiefs Association last Wednesday of the month. I will send it out there, and I will get it back to you, Pam.
Because that will give us the, as accurate of a fiscal notice we could do.
That's why she's as good as she is.
You know, and like I said, and I'm glad she's here, because I knew there was going to be some issues with this. I mean, we've worked together, we've tried to get all this done, like I said, for like, the last five years. I'm glad she's here.
That's why she's as good as she is.
You know, and like I said, and I'm glad she's here because I knew there was going to be some issues with this. I mean, we've worked together, we've tried to get all this done, like I said, for like the last five years, I'm glad she's here, she's definitely...
What, okay, I'm sorry, I've just got to get this cleared up. So what do we say to the chief of Willard's Fire Department who's not getting a $1,500 tax credit because he lives in Sussex County?
Time to move to Wacomiko.
Well, I understand.
Well, he lived in Wacomiko, he just moved to Sussex because that's where his future wife and they bought property there. What do you tell them?
I mean, you're going to have those questions, that's...
We can only do so much, as Pam said, we don't want to get it convoluted.
Well, I've already been asked by Delmar, a couple people from Delmar about that, and I understand it, I mean, and I told him, I said, this is not going to, this is just a building block, this is just the stepping stone, you know?
If this doesn't pass, I, you know, I have, I have to be the naysayer, if this doesn't pass, we can't build the next thing on something that hasn't passed.
We know that.
So if it passes, then we know what we have to try to build on. What, you know, in my accounting brain is, is okay, then these people are excluded from the next step on the list. The next step on the list is, maybe it's something associated with a LOSA program, but that LOSA program originally was intended to be everyone. Well, now, you don't, you may not want to, I don't want to say don't, you may not want to give the same person that you're already giving a tax credit, a LOSA payment because that may not be what the council and executive is interested in doing. So passing this gives us the building block as to what is the next step that we want to do.
Obviously, things can be amended, but my push for this is this is what I heard the firefighters saying that they wanted. I met with C.K., I met with John Hilton, others, and this is what they were saying would really help them out with recruitment and retention.
And this is explicitly for people not being paid.
Yeah, it says that...
Yes.
It is the volunteers and again, to get the credit from the state, again, going back to a document that they already submit, they can only get that credit if it's a volunteer activity, not a paid activity.
Understood that, I just wanted to make that clear with everybody.
Again, Pam, in reference to the Section 3, and I think this is all a template to work with, and Section 3 referencing the amount of credits, there's the 2,500 maximum amount in here, that's sort of a basis, but again, you know, what we're going to need your assistance on is to try to let us know and let the firefighters know what is fiscally sustainable based on the 25 homes per station average, right?
Yeah.
That gives you an idea of how large this number may or may not get. So we're going to certainly want to lean on you to help us decide how this fiscal element will be structured.
Yes.
And it doesn't have to go that high.
It doesn't have to, it could be, it doesn't have to.
Yeah, you know what I mean, this is just a building block, I mean, it's the foundation of the house here.
Exactly, exactly.
So you got to start at the ground and we're going to just work up and get everybody involved and we'll get everybody something, it's just, it's not going to happen overnight, we all know that.
But getting Pam that information that you say you have, that is leaps and bounds beyond where we've been before, so that's really good.
Well, I'll have, like I said, as far as the property, the tax thing, I will, I will put that out at the chief's the last Wednesday of this month and I will get it to you just as soon as, when would you want it, Pam?
So I, my recommendation is, is that we would have it no later than the middle of September. My also recommendation is, is instead of going right to a legislative session, I think it does need to come back with changed language. Sure. So that everybody, so if it's by September 15th, that would give us time at the next meeting, I would have that fiscal note, at the second meeting in September, not the next meeting, the second meeting is September, to have the fiscal note as well as the adjusted language to make sure this is a little tighter.
One other question I do have, now, the data that you will give Ms. Olland, does that, is that also going to distinguish whether or not they are a homeowner in Wacomiko County?
Well, what he's going to do is, he's going to pull the information and say that it's...
No, it doesn't, it just gives the address.
So what he's going to do is, he's going to call his list and give me an estimate of these are the people. I would then be able to do a test sample to make sure that those, the ones he's handed me are. In the ultimate issuance of this, they would be certifying that these are homeowners. We would also be pulling the information that we decide is the language, this is the form that we want to look at.
So you would combine that with SDA?
Yes.
Gotcha.
C.K., I know you and I talked before, if somebody has more than one property, it would just be their primary resident.
Primary residence.
And that's what we need to make, again, I can't remember the language in here if it does say primary residence, but it needs to be primary residence.
And we discussed no double-dipping, so...
Yeah, like my wife and I, you're not, I mean, you're going to save a little money on us because she's a member. I mean, there's, there's quite a few wives and husbands that are in the departments that you're, like I said, that you're just going to hit one time.
You get one credit on one household.
And we know she's going to get it and not you, okay?
Yep, yep.
Okay, anything, any other questions?
No.
No? Everybody's good? Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for your time.
All right, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, yeah, we appreciate you being here.
Good night.
No, I will not. Yeah, the county, yes, the fire meeting is in Allen tonight, yes.
And Alyssa Hastings, Josh's better half, is going to be there tonight to go over the FEMA grants to...
As well as the lead person from, the head person from the Office of Senator Van Hollen.
Van Hollen.
The head person who deals with this coming down from Baltimore.
So try to get you straight.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.